In favor?
Aye.
Motion carries for zero. Oral communications, the oral communication section provides the public with an opportunity to address the board on closed session items only. Persons wishing to be heard may attend in person and should complete a request to be heard card and submit it to the recording secretary before the start of the meeting or call six one nine six seven nine nine zero zero one prior to the start of the meeting. Telephone lines open one hour prior to the start of the meeting. Speakers are requested to limit their remarks to three minutes and speak in a respectful and professional manner. The board shall limit the total time for public input on each topic to twenty minutes. With board consent, the president may increase or decrease the time allowed for public comments depending on the number of persons wishing to be heard. No board action can be taken. Do we have any? There are no speakers. We will now adjourn to closed session in accordance with the following. Government Code Section three five four nine point one D and five four nine five seven point six, collective bargaining employee negotiations, agency negotiators Fagan, Friedman and Fullfrost LLP and Adam Silva and McNally LLP, employee organizations Chula Vista Classified Employees Organization, Chula Vista Educators, nonrepresented employees administrators association of Chula Vista. Government Code Section five four nine five seven, public employee discipline dismissal and release. Government Code Section five four nine five six point nine D, conference with legal counsel anticipated litigation, initiation of litigation pursuant to paragraph four of subdivision D of Government Code Section five four nine five six point nine one potential case. Government Code Section five four nine five six point nine D one, conference with legal counsel existing litigation in the office of administrative hearings, case number two zero two three zero six zero six five seven. Government Code Section five four nine five six point nine D one, conference with legal counsel existing litigation in the office of administrative hearings, case number two zero two three zero eight zero three five seven. And Government Code Section five four nine five seven, public employee appointment title principal two.
We now reconvene to open session with all board members present minus Vice President Closed session announcements will be made by Clerk Fernandez.
Thank you, President Ugarte. The matter of Government Code Section 54956.91, Conference with Legal Counsel, Existing Litigation in Office of Administrative Hearings, Case Number 2023060657. On motion by Member Dominguez Cervantes, second by Member Bishop, the Board approved the settlement by the following vote. The eyes are Dominguez Cervantes, Ugarte, Bishop Fernandez. The matter of Government Code Section 54956.91, Conference with Legal Counsel, Existing Litigation in Office of Administrative Hearings, Case Number 2023080357. On motion by Member Fernandez, second by Member Bishop, the Board approved the settlement by the following vote. Eyes are Fernandez, Dominguez Cervantes, Ugarte, Bishop. Matter of Government Code Section 54957, Public Employee Appointment Title, OTI, School Principal. On motion by Member Bishop, second by Member Fernandez, the Board approved the employment of Cristina Quiroga as OTI School Principal by the following vote. The eyes are Bishop Fernandez, Dominguez Cervantes, Ugarte. Your time will come. In the matter of Government Code Section 54957, Public Employee Appointment Title, Greg Rogers School Principal, on motion by Member Dominguez Cervantes, second by Member Bishop, the Board approved the employment of Lisette Porras as Greg Rogers School Principal by the following vote. The eyes are Dominguez Cervantes, Ugarte, Bishop Fernandez. Congratulations to you both.
The open session of the regular meeting of the Chula Vista Elementary School District Board of Education is now in order. Welcome everyone. Trustee Dominguez Cervantes, if you could lead us in the pledge, please.
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will now approve the agenda. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Trustee Bishop, seconded by Clerk Fernandez. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries four zero. Special Awards, Recognitions, and Honors. Recognition of the Hilltop Drive and Corky McMillan Elementary Schools for being awarded a Save the Music Grant. Ms. Rochelle Carroll.
Thank you. It is my pleasure tonight to celebrate the two of our newest Save the Music Foundation schools. In partnership with the Save the Music Foundation, the district has been enhancing the educational experience for its students through music since 2013. This collaboration has resulted in developing and sustaining music programs across the district, making music education accessible to a broader range of students. Since 2013, the district has been the proud recipient of 23 Save the Music Grants totaling an estimated $600,000 worth of musical instruments distributed across 21 schools. Save the Music Foundation, in partnership with Sound Start, a Sound United Foundation, has awarded two additional music grants of new musical instruments and equipment to support music education at Hilltop Drive and Corky McMillan Elementary Schools. These Intro to Music Grants are comprised of approximately $25,000 worth of instruments each, including class sets of ukuleles, xylophones, drums, and more. In addition to these vital resources, the district and Save the Music are collaborating on professional development for our dedicated music teachers, ensuring that our students receive the highest quality music education. So tonight, on behalf of the Board of Education, the President will present certificates of recognition to Principal Dr. Charles Greiser, who will accept on behalf of Hilltop Drive, and Principal Dr. Savannah Sturgis, along with music teacher DeSandra Kono, who will accept on behalf of McMillan. We appreciate and are excited for you, and we know that our VAPA Coordinator, Mark Keimer, is excited for you as well and is looking forward to working with you. So thank you and congratulations.
Congratulations.
First we have Hilltop Drive. 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 First we have Hilltop Drive.
And Corky McMillan Elementary. My music teacher, DeSandra Kono, so thank you for her.
And any board comments?
I do. I really think it's a wonderful... Did you have to apply for it? Did you submit the application? Amazing. I believe strongly in encouraging children to play instruments. You know, it stimulates... I even wrote my notes. It stimulates the brain cells, improving functions like memory and abstract reasoning, essential for math and science. I didn't do this by myself. A music teacher told me and showed me the scientific proof to back that up. And of course, it brings that balance and harmony, that escape that we all need. You know, at those times. And I remember my children wanted to play an instrument, and I didn't have the money. I was a single mom, so it's just wonderful that you're doing this for the children. And I hope that other teachers, maybe show them your tricks. You know, hey, how did this get through to the finalists? So that they can also bring these wonderful grants of music to the kids. Thank you.
Congratulations to both of our schools. It's an incredible honor to get these grants, and we know you worked hard for them. And thank you so much for the work that you have done. There is nothing like putting an instrument in the hands of a child. I grew up playing the violin, and it changed my trajectory of my life. It truly did. People always think of me as a theater kid, but I also played the violin, and I still adore it. And it really can do amazing wonders for a kid growing up and give them confidence and love for something bigger than themselves. So thank you so much. I cannot wait to see it implemented. And if you're doing any concerts, please let us know. We want to come and see them.
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you for doing the hard work. It's tough to sustain these programs, so every bit counts. I know these instruments probably take a beating over the years, so it's gonna be really useful to get some new ones. And thank you for taking the shot and being awarded the grant. Congratulations.
I just want to echo everything that was said. Congratulations. Music is amazing, and to be able to teach it, to be able to learn it, is one of the gifts that we have in this world. So thank you for everything that you do, and congratulations to both schools. Give them a hand, guys. I do want to... I skipped over roll call so that we can make sure that we have that, that all board members are present, with the absence of Vice President Francisco Tamayo this evening. Just want to make sure that gets into our minutes. Communications to the Board. Chula Vista Classified Employees Organization, Ms. Angela Reed.
Thank you. And before I get into my speech, music. The schools that applied for this grant and received it, amazing. I am a musical family. I drive the van. I don't play. But my whole family plays multiple instruments each, and it's always been a part of our family. And having it in the schools is a way to get young children to appreciate the music. So thank you for what you do, and thank you for providing that enrichment, that necessary education to our students. Okay, so now, on to what I'm writing. Good evening. I don't like to call people out, but tonight I'm calling out Sharon. So this is a good thing. So Sharon Casey, with her background in special education, called together Task Force to develop a plan to support student behavior needs. CVCO is proud to have participated in and actively supports Sharon's work. We feel this plan will finally address the growing need for a proactive approach to addressing student maladaptive behaviors. Instead of reacting after the fact, one aspect of this plan puts in place behavior specialists at every school site to support students in the beginning of their behavior journey, instead of at the end when the behavior is out of control. It also supports district-wide training for classroom norms for all classroom staff, certificated and classified. By teaching staff across the district how best to support students in both general and special education classrooms, it is my fervent belief that we lay the foundation for student success. According to the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention in Addressing Safe and Supportive School Environments, the benefits of effective classroom management extend to academic-related outcomes, including decreasing disruptive behaviors and increasing academic learning and engagement. In other words, proactive behavior support leads to classroom environments where students succeed rather than flounder. I can say with confidence that all school staff hope, wish, need this behavior plan to be implemented. CVCO is thrilled we are finally taking proactive measures to support students' needs. We must anticipate how to support future generations of students. We can no longer sit back and wait to react. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Reed. Chula Vista Educators, Ms. Rosie Martinez.
Good evening. I hope everyone had a chance to disconnect and recharge during the fall break. CVC is also very appreciative of the district's response to the concerns that we've been expressing. Last month, you heard from different partner groups about the issues around student behaviors and the impact that they're having on everyone. Assistant Superintendent Sharon Casey wasted no time and scheduled meetings during the break. She led the work with a team of us to look at additional supports that could be put into place to help alleviate the situation. It is clear that we share the interest of safety and positive school environment for all students and staff. We recognize that we all share the responsibility of working together with students, families, and staff to create clear expectations and provide appropriate supports to make this happen. CVE is willing and committed to doing our part to improve our current situation. We ask that there be a consistent reporting process of incidents across the district. We are aware that that's not happening now and find it very concerning. We cannot address issues if we don't know where they're happening. CVE has started a reporting form so that we can keep track of incidents where our members are being assaulted. It is sad that this is the current reality, but something that requires our attention. Everyone needs to feel safe at school. We are also very grateful to the district's bargaining team under the leadership of Assistant Superintendent Jason Romero, and to this Board and to Superintendent Dr. Reyes for your support in having a productive and meaningful bargaining process. Language that we have agreed to so far changes past practices that did not foster trust or respect for CVE members. I want to publicly thank CVE's bargaining team, led by our Chair, Tim Chris. They have spent a tremendous amount of time and effort into writing thoughtful proposals to best represent CVE members. We work on changing the evaluation process for about 10 years now. And thanks to everyone who worked on this throughout the years, but especially to these teams that actually made it happen. We are very excited about it. Language that impacts our working condition is very important, but we recognize that the current cost of living increases has everyone struggling just to keep up. Yesterday, CVE presented the district with a proposal around wages that we feel is realistic and fair. Chula Vista Elementary School District is an outlier district that is recognized for its amazing work throughout the state. It is not acceptable for its employees to be amongst the lowest paid in the county. Last month, I pointed out that CVESD's teacher salary is ranked 33 out of all districts in the county. I'm happy to share that data with you if you're interested in seeing it. Our ask tonight is that we, as we await the district's response to our proposal when we meet next Wednesday, is that you consider the presentation that Deputy Superintendent Oscar Esquivel presented last month with the unaudited actuels. We saw a 1% increase into the reserves. We saw an increase of about $21 million to the general fund. Last year, the district received a 13% increase in ongoing money, and CVE got 2.5% of that because we settled our contract early in good faith. It is unrealistic to think that we should not be getting part of that money that was left on the table and part of the 8% increase that you received this year. This is when you get to show us how much you value and appreciate and respect the staff that makes Chula Vista Elementary School District the best place to be. We hope that you will do the right thing and seriously consider our proposal. Again, we feel that it's realistic and fair, and we'll put Chula Vista in the top 10 of the list of paid in the county. That's where we deserve to be. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez. Oral Communications. The Oral Communications Section provides the public with an opportunity to address the Board on non-agenda items. Persons wishing to be heard may attend in person and should complete a Request to be Heard card and submit it to the Recording Secretary before the start of the meeting, or call 619-679-9001 prior to the start of the meeting. Telephone line opens one hour prior to the start of the meeting. Speakers are requested to limit their remarks to three minutes and speak in a respectful and professional manner. The Board shall limit the total time for public input on each topic to 20 minutes. With Board consent, the President may increase or decrease the time allowed for public comments, depending on the number of persons wishing to be heard. No Board action can be taken. Tonight, we have three speakers. First, we have Christina. Motion? Mohica, I'm sorry. It's light pencil. I'm sorry, Ms. Mohica.
Good evening, trustees and board members. My name is Christina Mohica, a member of the School Site Council, a dedicated parent volunteer, and a member of the PTA. I stand before you as a mother of three beautiful girls, two of whom attend Finney Elementary School, Emily in fourth grade and Ava in third grade. Today, I want to address a series of unfortunate events that have unfolded in the past year, events that have been difficult to navigate as a parent and even more challenging to explain to my girls and my nephew. Last year, on May 22nd, a Monday, we faced a tragic situation that sent shockwaves through our school community. Our principal informed us that the school was placed on secure campus due to a fire arm mistakenly placed in the students' backpack by their parent. While we are grateful that the incident was handled according to protocol, it left us shaken and questioning our children's safety. The lack of effective communication from the district left us with unanswered questions. We were forced to rely on news outlets and gossip from other parents for information. We felt a lack of support during this difficult time, and fear of sending our children back to school was palpable. Regrettably, our concerns persisted throughout the following school year. Parents gathered to discuss our worries with the principal during a coffee meeting. We received hopeful promises of safety measures, but as time went on, these changes failed. These changes failed to materialize, and it's just hurting to feel that our school's safety is not a priority on the district's budget. And we only requested the most basic of safety measures. To make matters worse, our beloved psychologist, a vital member of our community, was abruptly transferred to another school without considering the impact on students, my kids, who rely on her support. This decision was made without notifying parents and providing a plan to address a disruption. We also experienced a water crisis when our school was placed under a boil water advisory. There were no water stations or bottled water available when the students arrived. It took numerous calls and emails to the superintendent and board members to get answers regarding basic water supplies. In hindsight, our school should have been closed for the day, and parents should have been given the option to keep their children at home without affecting their attendance records. We also found it concerning that sanitation promises were not fulfilled despite assurance to the contrary. My grievance today is about the lack of transparency, communication, and follow-through on promises made. We feel unsupported, which is profoundly disappointing. However, let me make it clear, I haven't given up on Finney Elementary. We all want the best for our children, and we will continue to advocate for their safety and well-being. Today, I hope that you hear my request, and I hope to hear from you guys regarding these issues. Thank you for your time, and I hope that together we can make the necessary changes to ensure the safety and success for our children at Finney Elementary.
Thank you, Ms. Mohica. Classified Staff.
Hi, my name is Kathy Rodriguez. I would like to talk about a living wage for classified staff. A Step One instructional assistant and student attendant makes less than $25,000 a year. This is before taxes and medical insurance if you're covering your family. This is not a living wage, especially with the cost of living going up. A lot of classified staff need a second job to survive. It is not healthy to work a seven-hour shift and then head to a five-hour shift at another job. We are losing our most valuable workers because they are able to make more at one job elsewhere. LA Unified and San Diego Unified have both come to an agreement and raised their pay scale. Fast food workers will be starting at $20 an hour in April. A new California law will increase the minimum wage for hospital workers to $25 an hour. In order to stay competitive with other districts, we need pay increases across the board. Since the pandemic, we have had many shortages throughout the district. The other day, we had a bus route canceled, and parents were sent scrambling to get their children to school. This is special ed class. Their surest way to attract and keep valuable staff is to pay people their worth. A person working full-time should be able to live, eat, survive on their income. I hope our district is able to take all of this into account as our unions negotiate our contracts. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez. B. Johnson.
Good evening, board members. I've been at the school district for about 10 years. Out of those 10 years, I was a student attendant, but due to the lack of support in the school, I was transferred. I decided to apply to another position. This means that I'm now an IA at a TK class. But based on these changes, I didn't realize that transferring from one position to another, not only did I lose wages, I also lost ranges. The range, I was 22, now my range 18. And out of that, the money that I lost, for one year, it was $4,450. This might not sound a lot to you, but it is for me and my family. As an IA, we are still assisting four-year-olds with their bathrooming, with their buttoning their shirts, their zippers, and tying their shoelaces all day long. And also, with helping them in the cafeteria, opening their juices, I feel like I still attend one-on-one to each and every child. We love working with all the students, but for the pay and the high number of kids we assist is just not enough. We want to serve and care our students. And as an SA and as an IA, we need better livable wages in this inflation economy. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. There are no more speakers. Oral Presentation and Written Reports. District Safety Health Update, Mr. Romero.
Okay, first, I want to call up our two new principals to the district.
I know it's a weird time because we decided consent agenda would be passed before we did recognitions because we want to make sure we've actually approved the recognition. So I know it's a weird, but yes, absolutely.
Okay. So first, I would like to call up Cristina Quiroga to the stand, please. Cristina, to the stand. Christina, to the stand. So Christina comes to us as an experienced educator with over twenty years' experience. Yes, she started when she was fifteen. And she has come to us from multiple school districts. Last year, she served as an associate principal for our Royal Vista Charter School and has been acting principal at Otae, an accomplished educator, a South Bay community member, someone who went to our schools, went to our local high schools, and is now our proud principal at Otae. Christina.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Chula Vista Elementary School District Board members, for entrusting me to be the principal at Otae Elementary. I'm honored. Dr. Reyes, Jason Romero, and all of the cabinet, thank you so much. You have all prepared me for this position. I appreciate all the time and all of your support from last year and this year. Thank you. I'm excited to be at Otae Elementary, Otae Falcons. I'm not sure if there's any here, but I'm proud to be an Otae Falcon and work alongside with the wonderful staff and the community. And it's going to be great. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
I'd now like to call up Lisette Boras, who will be our principal at Greg Rogers Elementary. Lisette. So as you, Lisette describes, she's uniquely qualified as she has elementary, middle school, and secondary high school experience. An accomplished educator and leader. She's spent time working as a school psychologist and working in the special education department. She has a strong background in social and emotional development for students. She has a strong background in providing diversity, equity, and inclusion projects. And we're super happy to have her as our new principal at Greg Rogers Elementary.
Thank you so much. I am extremely excited to join the Chula Vista Elementary School District family. I'm super excited to be principal at Rogers, meet all our families, our parents, our students. Our APs here showing me support already, and so I'm already feeling the love. Thank you so much for this opportunity.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you. So our safety and update for today. So as our regular monthly updated safety presentation, do I have access? Gentlemen. There we go. Great. So currently, we are launching our WeTip program. And so I want to pass out our signs to our board and superintendent. These will be going up at every school site. And I ask you guys to go ahead and scan the QR code and try it out. Send your message to the district because I don't want principals getting any, any updates. But what this is, is this is an anonymous opportunity for people to report everything from bullying to suspicious people on campus. And this gives them a real-time access. So what happens is if there's an emergency incident, the WeTip organizations notify the correct authority. So if there is a break-in at a school site or near campus, they'll contact the police department. If there's an emergency response that requires an EMT, they'll contact medical. If there's a fire on campus, they'll contact the, the fire department. If there's bullying incident that occurs, our principals are notified. So this, this confidential program, we're going to roll it out to our, our staff starting November first, but it's active right now. Our schools and principals will get an update at our next principal leadership meeting. And then we'll have a small training, no more than ten minutes with our, our staff on how it's going to impact them. But we're super excited to, to continue to bring to the board updates for safety for our, our community. Security assessments. So these are the assessments that we're doing with our SOBOL group. We are down to our final two. So CVLCC and Bayfront are our last two schools that we're going to be doing this week and then finishing up and then being able to come to the board in a closed session presentation on our safety either at the November or December board meeting. The, the two-hundred-plus-page safety plan that you guys will be given will have specific updates for district-wide standardization of safety protocols and plans, but also specific needs for each individual school that we went through. So what I mean by that is if there is a safety protocol that should be a district standard, that will be recommended. If there's a standard that's specific to that school site, that will be recommended. So the two-hundred-plus-page full presentation will be presented to the board in closed session and you will get a full copy of the, the, the work that's being done right now. So security preparedness, lockdown drill, just a quick update. We're going to be scheduling our second lockdown drill for quarters three and four. We're doing our active shooter and critical response professional development at school sites. The emergency response procedure training for all new school staff and ELOP site leads. All the school sites, single-school safety plans will be submitted to the district for review by this Friday. And our security camera access has been set up so the principals of the twenty designated schools will have access to recordings and to live feeds on their devices. Either their computer, their district-provided iPad, or if they want to set up to their phones as well. Last month, the board talked about prioritizing our safety of our school sites and by providing a, a safety manager. I'm super excited to be bringing forward tonight a job description for our security programs and safety operations manager. So just a quick little differentiation between what the two managers are going to do. So the first one, the current emergency preparedness and security manager is really boots-on-the-ground. This is, there's an incident that's occurring at one of our school sites. A principal notifies the district and the superintendent. We send that person there. That person is able to work hand-in-hand with the principal and provide that immediate response to the, to the need. The security programs and operations manager is more of the, I'd say, program provider, program facilitator. So we have a new app. We have an AgeX app. We have WeTip. We have these things that need presentations and trainings and plannings to do. This person will be responsible for that. Both people will be available when emergency needs. So if there is a emergency happening, it's basically all hands on deck. So myself, Jenny Vinyak, these two people were always there to provide support as needed. But these two people will, will be working in, in different capacities. We did already have interviews for these positions, for this new position. We, we cast a wide net and we were super aggressive about trying to find an amazing security program and safety operations manager. We had over two-hundred applicants. Former chiefs of police, former Homeland Security officers, people who were super excited that a district was willing to take a chance in ensuring that they had the safest schools in California because that's how we advertised it. We advertised it for someone who is interested in finding ways to make Chula Vista's school district the safest schools in California. And we had sixty applicants that submitted videos for our, our first round clearance. So we had, Jenny Vinyak, myself, and Jose reviewed sixty video applications. We brought forward eight candidates last Friday. And at the next board meeting, we'll be bringing forward an amazing new employee to the district. So we're super excited about that. Thank you for the support and thank you for the continued efforts in making our schools the safest in California. Okay, last thing before I pass it over to your questions is we're, we're really proud of our mental wellness program that we partnered with Campus Clinic. This has been featured on KPVS, Telemundo, and iHeartRadio. We are, this is critical counseling that's happening through licensed marriage and family therapists. Tania being the one that you see here that was on PBS and Telemundo. This program is for our neediest students. So when counseling and psychoevaluations aren't, aren't enough, early childhood mental health therapy is strongly needed. We, you know, as, as Ms. Ugarte had us have a moment of silence last month for a, a community member that we lost from one of our local high schools who took his own life. Early research, I mean, extensive research has shown early mental health therapy saves lives. And we're excited to, to say that through our partnership with Campus Clinic, we're expanding this program. And we want to make sure, and I know there's questions about this, this is of course with parent consent, a hundred percent with parent consent. This is ensuring that students are given surveys, they're screened. And right now, we have fifty-four staff members that are currently being serviced through our mental wellness program and fifteen students that are fourth grade and above in therapy. So one of the recent success stories, a mother who, who asks us to share this because she feels like it saved her kid's life. She's a mother of two at Rice Elementary. She contacted Campus Clinic, expressing a lot of concern about her son's anxiety and depression, not wanting to come to school, suicide ideation, cutting. Campus Clinic connected with her. They got their provider in. She then talked about like, after a few therapy sessions, that her daughter was exhibiting the same thing. And now both kids are doing better. They went from attending school less than fifty percent of the time to having perfect attendance the last two months. They want to come to school now. You know, these are kids that are super excited and given a chance. And we're going to continue the therapy and we're offering this to any child who needs help. So that was just one example of, of a few. But we're super excited about what we're doing and partnering to make sure that our kids are mentally well to handle, handle society and life. So, thank you. Questions?
Questions from the board, comments?
That's wonderful news, Mr. Romero. Thank you for pushing it and pushing it and pushing it and not giving up on this. That's really good news. And to continue encouraging, encouraging access to it is important. And I especially appreciate the fact that it's parental consent because that's when you have that partnership and it's more than likely going to be as effective as that is. Thank you.
Just to continue on that, I know it's not a question, but to, to respond to that, one of the things that's unique about the program that we're providing is the wraparound services. So we're, we're providing counseling to the, the student, but we're also providing recommendations to the parents at home, to the supervisors at home, to the, the guardians, if you will. So those wraparound services are what we're doing here at school. We want to make sure mimics what's happening at home. And what's happening at home, we want to make sure that we know what's happening there to support it at school. And so when we're dealing with educationally-related mental health services, oftentimes, that's confined to the school site. But these mental health services are confined to the family. And so that's where, where our program is separating itself from what's happening at a lot of schools.
That's excellent. You know, it, it gets better. That's good. Thank you. I did have a question, not for the mental aspect wraparound, but more for the campus clinic where, you know, they're going through to see if the children, they're going to get checked for flus and such. I just had one comment. I had a parent ask me, I guess her child keeps escaping just to say he's going to get tested and he's really not. I don't know how to control that, but I thought I'd share that, you know.
I'll make sure that.
I don't know how do we monitor that.
We go class to class, but I'll make sure that they pay attention.
Yeah, that was the parent, on her own son, touting so that. And regards to the, the security assessments, you mentioned that the rollout for the schools will be in November. I'm wondering if you wouldn't consider a smaller rollout to maybe five schools or ten schools, whatever you find appropriate, to iron out the kinks before it goes en masse?
Yeah, so I probably misspoke. What I meant by that was the, the actual report will be done and we'll share that with the board. And based on the board's recommendation, we'll talk about how we rule it out. But yes, thank you.
That's good. Thank you. Thank you for your hard work. Really appreciate your focus on campus and student and family safety.
Thank you as always for your report. You know, I always appreciate hearing from you each month on this. I think we, I really appreciate the fact that we're talking about the things that the people in the community are talking about. We always should be. And safety and health is of utmost importance to all of us, really. I really appreciate all the stuff with Campus Clinic and the mental health piece. When we talk about safety for children, mental health is a big way that we support safety in children. And I really, I'm really impressed with the work that we've gotten to do with Campus Clinic. I'm, I really appreciate them as a partner, for sure. I'm really excited to see what comes of our wide net cast and all of those folks that applied for that, the job. That's amazing that you guys watched sixty videos. That must have been fun.
I'm earning these dark circles. That's not hereditary.
And this is super cool. I got the one in Spanish. I've been practicing my Spanish. I figured it out. And I made a, while you were presenting for about, it took like two minutes, I made a report about a dodgy-looking guy that was talking into a microphone at the district office. And I even got to take a picture of him, so look out for that. But I just, I just did it to, to, I have a case number, six seven zero zero nine. But I wanted to test it and see how hard it was, and it was incredibly easy as we see. So I'm really excited that this is an opportunity for people to feel like they have a way to report things. Because as was said by a woman at the mic, it's really, it's really tough when you feel like the only conversations are happening between people in the community and not with the school. So thank you so much for the implementation of all these things and I'm really proud of the work that you've been doing. Thank you.
I know, I'm doing the same thing.
I reported you as well for being kind of shady. Just wanted to thank you and the team again amongst casting wide nets and hiring good people. You managed to progress every meeting on both of these topics. So I know that takes a lot of hard work and time and I appreciate you and the team. Small question, when are we going to, when are we thinking about doing another community security workshop or whatever?
Right. I think one of the things we wanted to do was knock out these site assessments. And I think probably realistically, at the beginning of the start of the, the next year, maybe late January after the board gives us direction. And we can talk about how we're prioritizing the plan for, for school sites and for the district. So I think that'd be the most appropriate time.
Thank you for the report. I have one question with regard to the CSSPS reports that are due on the twentieth. Do our labor partners, CVCIO and CVE, have site reps that sign off on those at each site? Or do we, are we not in that process yet?
So you're part of the process with the, the actual committees. So there are representatives from all groups in those committees. And although the principal signs off, the committee keeps attendance for who participates in those meetings. So yes, there's active participation and strong voice from all our represented groups.
I would recommend for the future that we have an actual signature spot for our labor partners on that before it's submitted to the district.
We can do that.
The other thing, and I know we've had the information before, but if you could remind us in a Friday update with regard to the twenty schools that have the designated, where the principals have access to the cameras, just so we have a complete list of those twenty. I know that we've gotten it before, but I just want a reminder.
I'll give you guys, I'll send you guys the school sites and I'll also send you images from those cameras so you can see firsthand how they're working. That'd be great.
Thank you. And again, thank you for the report.
Thank you.
Approve the Consent Calendar. The following items listed under the Consent Calendar are considered by the board in one action. There will be no discussion on these items prior to the time the board votes on the motion unless members of the board, staff, or public request specific items to be discussed and/or removed from the consent calendar. Do we have any items from the board that you wish to pull?
Yes, I do. Eleven B. President Ugarte, do you want me to itemize what in item B you want me to pull or just in general?
If it is applicable, yes. If it's, is it eleven B and?
And then there's the items within them. Would that help?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So it's eleven B, and then within eleven B, it's eleven BD, eleven BF, eleven BH, eleven BJ. That's it.
And that's all you're pulling today?
No, I'm pulling more.
Okay.
Then I'm pulling eleven C, eleven D. And some of these are just quick comments. Eleven E, eleven F, eleven Q and R together. That's all.
That's all?
Thank you.
Madam President, I would like to pull eleven BG, I believe it is.
Okay. Okay, and the item I was going to pull was eleven F also, and it's already been pulled. So, we are pulling, and I'm going to review. Items eleven B, which is eleven BD, eleven BF, eleven BH, eleven BJ, eleven BG, eleven C, eleven D, eleven E, eleven F, and eleven Q and R as one item. This is an action item.
Move to approve all but the above-mentioned. Can I do that?
Yes.
Cool.
My second.
Move by Trustee Bishop, seconded by Trustee Dominguez Cervantes. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, four, zero, one absence. I keep forgetting to say that. All right. Trustee Dominguez Cervantes, eleven BD.
Correct. Job descriptions, starting on page seven of twenty-seven, if that helps.
Yes.
Teacher on special assignment. I brought it up last month, but I still cannot see removing another sped teacher from the most vulnerable of children out there during this time. I know we've spoke about what, some of the workforce projects that we're working on, but I think that at this time, I just can't see doing it. The sped staff is burned out, and I had a problem with this last month that I still can't reconcile. And I know Ms. Casey is working like if she's five persons, because she's been out there working, talking to the, all our partners, bringing forth to us possible solutions. And I know it's not for the lack of you working, Ms. Casey. It's got nothing to do with that. What I'm looking at is, is it the right time to pull a sped teacher out there? You know, I know it's a moving target, it's a balancing act, but I just can't see doing that right now when they are just so overwhelmed, both the IAs, the special, the in-classroom IAs. We've heard of different incidents that I've brought to your attention, Dr. Reyes, both in emails and in screenshots that I've taken from next door of comments parents are making. And it's just not, I don't think it's the right time. I just can't see myself reconciling that. We just can't pull, and then the designator, the job description is for a sped ed moderate or moderate severe credential teacher. Oh, my gosh! It just screams in the face of not now. And I'm hoping our chair would consider waiting for an impact analysis before moving forward, or having had additional information just recently about what we're working on, maybe just tabling it until a more appropriate time.
Dr. Reyes, would you like to address the concerns?
Sure. Ms. Casey, could you speak on that item? A couple of things. One is, is it a change of just the job description? Do we have a person already in that? Or is it a new job description that we're going to be hiring? And then, what is the purpose and how they're going to be serving either the sites, the district students?
Absolutely. So, this is a change to the job description that we brought to you last month so we could have the opportunity to post for this position. This position would be supporting our sped teachers in the classroom to help them get through some of those trials they're dealing with. So, an expert in their area that is someone who's doing the work that they're doing at this time. When we post it to hire this position, if we are pulling someone internal, which we will be, we won't take that person from that classroom until we have someone to replace them. So, this position is very important to us so that we can bring in a teacher to work alongside teachers.
That helps. That clarifies, you can't take away what we can't replace.
Correct.
We're already on two crutches.
Right.
Thank you.
And with the board's permission, if we can get through all of BDFGH and J, we can vote on them in one soup? Okay, BF?
Okay, BF. Change of assignment. I see Mr. Perez Chica's here. I know, I saw him a little bit ago. And this change is bittersweet. A certificated teacher made me aware of a sped teacher who needed manipulatives for the children. I donated some money to help that teacher. And I know that Mr. Perez Chica, I was informed by her, was out there doing the same thing. Follow-up revealed that Mr. Perez Chica had taken the initiative, stepped in to mentor that sped teacher. That sped teacher told me that she did not quit because of his mentoring. That was the only reason that kept her there. Next, the following week, I found out that another sped teacher was at the brink of quitting. Again, I find out Mr. Perez, I don't know how he does, how that works, but Perez Chica steps in and mentors and provided that teacher resources and that moral support and guidance. And I witnessed at a meeting with the union, Ms. Rosie Martinez and Mr. Perez Chica, we were having a meeting out at a local, little hole-in-the-wall restaurant, and this young adult, special needs adult, comes over and right away goes over to Mr. Perez Chica. He was so overwhelmed with joy and happy to see Mr. Perez Chica and thanked him for giving him the tools. And I recognize this young man because he's sometimes my bagger at once. What was most moving to me was this young man asked Mr. Perez Chica, "You don't remember me, don't you?" And he said, "Yes, I do." And he gave him his name. That overwhelmed that young man. It was just very moving, and it made a difference to that young man now. Obviously, he was a young child back when Mr. Perez Chica, I don't know if Perez, Mr. Perez Chica was taking him home, but he made a huge impact on him. Then, and so, I witnessed that impact, and Ms. Martinez is there to witness it. What I see is happening, I saw in our job description being changed for Mr. Perez Chica is, I don't know, is it a wise decision to pull him out of that function that he's now in? I don't know. You tell me. I witnessed it, and I don't want to see him have any less impact. But in the county where I used to work there, there were SAFs. They were called staff adjustment factors. Similar to a conversation we had earlier is, they go in and they're there, and they determine whether they're there with that teacher for two days, for three days, or there for a few hours and goes to another school. I'm also aware of another school where Mr. Perez Chica went and stayed and helped there when there was just IAs in that classroom, and it was a special needs class. Not, that's good that we have Mr. Perez Chica there. So, my question is, if he's going to be in the classroom three out of the five days, what of the other two ongoing days? I'm wondering, are we just shooting ourselves in the foot where the children are not going to have the consistency of the same teacher? But, you know, Mr. Perez Chica seems to be Mr. Super, Mr. Super sped. Again, I've asked Mr., Dr. Reyes before, and again, I don't know the impacts. We'll have to have the conversations. But I'm wondering if our current sped coordinators couldn't go out more often? We have four. And right now, I think the number is about twenty-eight students per special ed teacher. Do the math, that's quite a few students that could be impacted. I just wanted that insight to be considered in the overall decisions of what being made, and not to put Mr. Perez Chica in just one room when he's making such an impact in all the other schools. I don't know how it all, you know, pans out, but I thought it was important enough that the community sees Mr. Perez Chica as Mr. Sped.
I agree. We're all happy when we see Mr. Perez Chica. Dr. Reyes, could you explain the change of assignment and what that means, please?
Sure. So, a couple of things. So, there, I believe there are two questions. One regarding the change of assignment for Mr. Perez Chica, and then you also had a question regarding the special ed coordinators, correct?
Yes.
So, for the change of assignment, Mr. Romero, can you take that one? In regards to what caused the change, what is the new role currently with the change? And then, Ms. Casey, could you share what is the work of the jobs and responsibilities for the special ed coordinators? And do they, or do they go to sites when needed? Can they go to sites when needed? And address the question that?
Can they take a whole classroom or just spot?
Correct. So, Ms. Romero?
Great, thank you. You'll be happy to know, Mrs. Cervantes Dominguez, that, Dominguez Cervantes, excuse me, that we are fully aware of Mr. Sped. We were getting one of these capes back here to give to him after the board meeting. But really, the role that we're proposing tonight is currently that role. So, we, he has a grant that the CVE has applied for and received related to community schools. So, he'll be doing that work two days a week. And then, three days a week, we're going to have him as a resource to our teachers in need. So, he's not going to be at a single school classroom. You know, there are times when he's going to provide that consistent work in a single classroom when needed. But the goal ultimately is to be able to use his resources to maximize his specialties and impact as many classrooms as we can. It's going to vary week to week, right? You know, and we want to prioritize making sure that we support our special education classrooms. Having a special education expert is critical in doing that. And, you know, you got me teary-eyed when talking about that, because as a past special educator, I think anyone who's worked with our neediest students, when I hear that we have a community member that still lives in the community, still giving back to the community, and is recognized by the community, we want to prioritize that. Like, I want, I want to clone Tom Perez Chica and hopefully get him to impact future educators in the same way that he made that impact to the students. So, thank you. We'll continue to maximize his exposure to our classrooms. Thank you.
Ms. Casey?
Yes. So, I think some of the confusion that comes around with Mr. Perez Chica's support is that we asked him to support a classroom at Marooca that didn't have a teacher at the time, to build the structures in place, to be in that classroom alongside a substitute till we were able to hire, and just to get that classroom up and running. And so, he's been amazing. It's been night and day. Thank you for that support. We really appreciate you. Our special education coordinators, there are three special education coordinators that work at the district office underneath Dr. Campos. They each serve and support about nineteen school sites with five thousand special education students across the district. So, they are there to provide the litigation support and IEP support with school teams, that first person that communicates with parents, prior notices, and then that staffing support for school sites. So, to put them into a classroom would take away that, the three of them for the whole district, that support for IEP purposes. And then, they do all the trainings for school psychologists, all the trainings for the teachers. They do all the staffings for speech and language pathologists, for nursing, for occupational therapists. They are the people that are doing that background work to help the sped team run underneath Dr. Campos. The other, the fourth coordinator is our behavior person. She's the one that runs the Aspire program and does all of the RBT supports that we talked about through our behavior program. Does that answer your question?
Somewhat. Could I be invited to some of these trainings?
Hundred percent.
Thank you.
I will send you the links.
Okay. Item BG, Trustee Bishop. I'm going in alphabetical, BG.
I asked for G. No, BG.
BG.
BG. Actually, I only pulled this as a point of personal, hey, it's getting late, y'all. So, I pulled this as a point of personal privilege. I wanted to acknowledge, she's actually in the room. It's exciting. I wanted to acknowledge Melissa Noble, who has been the impact teacher at Clearview, who taught my son at a very critical time in his mental health in fifth grade, right when we closed for COVID, was supportive for him, and brought my daughter from a D reading level to a G reading level just from the brilliance of her work. And I couldn't be more proud that she is stepping up into our instructional service coordinator for literacy. It is such an earned honor, and I am so, I'm so pleased to see you succeeding and moving up in the world. And we couldn't be luckier to have you at the district doing the kind of work that you've been doing at Clearview with the district. And I really, I'm saddened for Clearview to lose you, but I'm very excited for the district to benefit from your work. So, congratulations. That is all.
B. BH. Yes, BH resignation starts on page ten of twenty-seven. I counted twenty resignations on this month's agenda. So, I know I've asked in the last few months if we had an exit interview. I think it's important that we find out why staff is resigning. I know some move on to better and better things. But I think it's important that we ask, what could we do better? And with, you know, we just have to be able to do something better, because something's not working. Every month, we have lists of how many people are leaving, and I don't have lists of how many people were, except for this month. You know, but, so it's very important, I think, that we find out why they're leaving. It, what do they have to lose? They're leaving. You know, if they want to drop it in a drop box, no name, something. I think it's important how we can be better. There's always something we can do better. And I'd like to take advantage of that opportunity since they feel that they don't have to own it too much because they're leaving. They don't have to stay here and feel like, you know, somebody's watching them now or something. But that's what hopefully we can do. I've asked for the last few months, and I'd really like to see that happen. Thank you.
Dr. Reyes?
So, Ms. Romero, could you share a little bit about transition of staffing the districts? And then, could you, so first, you can provide some information on that. And then, secondly, if you could come up with some kind of system? It could be digital, it could be some kind of system where we can get some input from staff?
Great. So, Ms. Dominguez Cervantes, this really reflects our ELOP program. So, our ELOP program, we hired close to fifty-five new employees. And most of the employees on this list are now employees that are being promoted into our ELOP program over the past two months. So, that's been a big reflection on this. We actually do provide opportunities for staff to give us input on, you know, reasons why they're leaving, so their current supervisors and human resources. But I do like the idea about standardizing that process. What we have, we have questions that we ask. We always want to know how we can do better. But I think that by next month, I'll be able to present to the board a process where we're standardized our exit interviews. So, thank you. Absolutely.
All right. This is an action item. Oh, we have J still? Okay, I'm sorry. BJ.
BJ starts on page eleven of twenty-seven. Higher-level leadership, two parent sessions and three student assemblies and teacher consulting at Heritage. I just wanted a two-liner. What is that?
Dr. Reyes?
Ms. Rix?
Thank you. We were looking into this, and they are doing some sessions and some assemblies around the culture of the school, specifically around how to interact with your peers. And, and it's really just, it's just helping the community in overall behaviors of how to reach out to your teachers and making sure that you have an adult that you can talk to and share your concerns. I think maybe also reviewing those that support at the school as well, so.
And on, along those same lines, as we're doing, I notice we're doing different things at different schools. I'm wondering if we couldn't capture them all on some, you know, I don't know, some grid where we wouldn't have to duplicate if something already works that maybe another school can use, something that it was really a strong delivery on a particular area? It just seems logical instead of, you know, the schools searching different programs that are out there. I'm sure there's a lot of good ones, but, you know, maybe we get a special rate, do two schools for X amount versus, I don't know, just think about it. So, the next one, page eleven of twenty-seven, Kagan Professional Development. Says services for the Calvary Christian Academy, page eleven of twenty-seven. Christian Academy K through six teachers. That's the buzzword. Services from ten nineteen to eleven twenty-two, not to exceed ten thousand. I'd like to know what sort of teacher services we provide to Calvary Christian Academy.
Mr.?
That's costing us.
Correct. Now, so those funds, can you talk about the funds and why we, Oscar? And why we support, for example, in this, we have St. Pius, we have St. Rose, we have Christian Calvary, how the funds go through us but actually belong to the students that attend that school?
Correct. The federal funds are a pass-through to the school district so that we pass those to the specific private school. And then, we have oversight over the expenditures where our board approves them here. But they're specifically provided by the federal government to these private schools. And our obligation is to have the board approve those expenditures.
Is it pass-through for what? Is it for food? Is it for?
No, they're for, they're federal Title I funds. And those are the funds that the, each of those schools are, have earned based on federal law. We record them and then we ensure that those are spent by that private school in accordance with federal regulations.
Good to know. Thank you.
Sure.
Page twelve of twenty-seven, the SDYS Chimes program. How many student teachers will benefit from this program and at which schools? Page twelve of twenty-seven.
It's at the bottom of the page? Dr. Reyes?
Ms. Carol?
So, that is for our, some of our music teachers in our VAPA schools. I do not have the exact count on how many actually will be utilizing it, but I can get that information in the board update for you.
Thank you.
Okay?
And I think it might be nice if we mentioned it to the community so they know ten different programs we're running.
Yes, and they do, each of those schools, they know that the children in the VAPA programs there will receive that opportunity, but I will provide some more follow-up information for you in the update.
All right. Thank you. Page thirteen of twenty-seven, the Regents of UC, CLRP, Professional Learning Institute to teachers at Sunnyside. And I'm just curious, this is Professional Learning Institute. Are, is it mandated? I'm hoping it is. Because if we're offering these trainings and the schools are paying for it and you're paying for just two teachers to attend this professional training when you have twenty teachers, I, you know, I'm just wondering how, if that's mandated training.
Okay. Ms. Ross?
So, great question. I'll explain a little bit of the process that you brought up. I think you brought in an excellent point forward of how across our school sites, we're developing systems for our principals and our school educators and classified staff, anything that's run at a school site, we're able to capture on a list. So, the process right now is that the schools that Lisa and I are assigned, so our twenty-one respective schools, the principal, when they would like to enter into a contract with a consultant or another group, they reach out first to their area assistant superintendent and then we review that proposal. And then, it might go to Ms. Casey if it's about student services. It might go to Ms. Carol if it's about instructional services. And then, we house that information on a master list. And it really is helping us not only to monitor the effectiveness of programming across our district, but also to share resources like you suggested. So, in terms of this consultant, when a principal has identified that they think this would be of value at their school site, one of the things that we do is we work with that principal to look at their implementation plan. So, yes, all of those teachers would be receiving that and they would have calendared it. And we even know, for example, when those services are occurring. So, there's a Hail Crest one on here with a literacy consultant. And I know, for example, that she starts there tomorrow. And it gives us an opportunity to go and see those programs and be a part of that learning as well.
That's good. Good news. Thank you. Page thirteen of twenty-seven, the Solis Group Contract. If the Solis Group is, page thirteen of twenty-seven. If the Solis Group is supposed to be coordinating services, I need some help understanding why we need to keep paying for delays that are not caused by us. So, is this money just to keep them on hold? Did they give us a bad plan? I know that there's been delays by other entities, but they should've built that into their plan instead of, they keep coming back and asking more money, more money, and we're still on hold. So, I'd like to find out if it's just on hold per se, how much we've paid Solis Group to just be on hold?
Dr. Reyes?
Ms. Oscar?
Sure. The reason for the extension is that, again, we need to complete the project. In order to complete the project, we need Department of State Architect approval. And there are still some areas of improvement more related to access at the school site. Because when you build a project, for example, in this case, there was a solar project, the Department of State Architect looks at the entire site and looks, the site has to be upgraded to current code. And so, that's, even though it's not a part of the solar project, we still have to do work on that project. And it's a cost of the solar program, even though it's not a direct solar expense. There's labor involved for that cost. And so, we still have to review and what Solis does is comply with the Department of Industrial Relations, the wage determination, labor payrolls, to make sure that those are being paid at prevailing wage.
I think what confused me is that the implication that we were just paying them because there were delays not caused by us.
No, correct. They're still doing work during the process.
See, that's the part that's not clear here. So, I'm like, why are we paying them to be on hold?
No, they're doing work.
Okay, thank you. It's like my solar guy that came and offered to fix the roof as well, right? Thank you. Number thirteen and fourteen of page twenty-seven, it just goes over. The Stradling Yoka Carlson and Roth, SYCR. My question is more, I know, help me understand, it seems like we're gonna be asking the community for another bond, right?
Well, we're actually doing a feasibility study and to see if it's something that we wanna do.
So, we'll get an impact analysis and how much it will cost the community, how much more out of their pocket they have to pay for this?
Correct. So, we're gonna be bringing all the information to the board and the board will decide whether to go forward or not. The district makes a proposal, but the board goes ahead and votes. Part of the proposal talks about how the money will, if the district decides to go ahead and go with a bond, how the money would be used, for what purpose?
In that analysis, could we also get a clear picture of what existing bonds we have now, where we're at as far as the balance goes, how much more that bond money's expected to stretch? But if we could also have it before Friday night when we hit our agenda so that we could review? I don't know that everybody's up to meeting you prior or if it's closed session so we can talk about it instead of, you know, ironing some of these things out so we can explain it to the community as well?
Yeah. Well, what we can do is we can bring you, give you some Friday updates so you are informed of, for example, the bonds and where were that information. Oscar can provide some information on that. So, when, as we get closer to presenting to the board, you have the background knowledge. Ms. Oscar, you wanna share what the process would be?
Yeah. Typically, that's the process what we go through in requesting bond issuances from the voters. We request approval from the board. And during that process, we look at current issuances, current projects, future costs. So, for example, if there's, if there is a future bond considered, that amount would be in coordination with the prior issuances and what we have projects planned for those prior issuances and what specific facilities need would be addressed with the future bond issuance.
It's just always a hard pill to swallow when you have to tell the community, more taxes. That's difficult. So, I, you know, really wanna get a better understanding of that. Thank you. That's it. Thank you.
It's an action item, yes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Moved by Clerk Fernandez, seconded by Trustee Bishop. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four zero with one absence. Eleven C, Trustee Dominguez Cervantes.
I just wanted a brief for the public to hear. Approved memorandum of understanding with CVE regarding transitional kindergarten combination class size, retain special transitional kindergarten teachers and affected special ed class transitional kindergarten teachers. I think the public would like to hear what that is.
Dr. Reyes?
Ms. Romero?
Yes, thank you. One of the things that we are prioritizing is recognition of our staff and their work that they're doing with our transitional kindergarten program. This is, you know, we're taking our best practices and making sure that we're, you know, doing the best to support our staff and by every means possible. One of the areas that we've noticed in addressing our needs at the transitional kindergarten level is for our stability of the program to match the needs of the students. And so, we are providing a stipend, a five thousand dollar stipend to our transitional kindergarten through first grade teachers to address the extra work that's required to cover in three classrooms. So, traditionally, we had like a model where we had three classrooms in our K through one, our second through fourth. There was a strong look at the work that's happening. And we had a kindergarten through first grade. And now, we came into an MOU with CVE that we can extend it to TK through one. That allows us to keep our students primarily at their homeschool or neighboring school and not have to create single TK special ed classrooms, which would put our youngest students on buses throughout the district. One, it impacts their ability to stay at their community school. Two, it provides a strong impact on our transportation that's already impacted and creates unnecessary havoc where this allows us to keep students at their school of residence.
We're opening more classes?
No, this is preventing us from opening more classes.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, this is the opposite of that. If we don't, then we would have to open more classes.
And transport students.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Moved by Clerk Fernandez, seconded by Trustee Bishop. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries four zero, one absence. Eleven D, Trustee Dominguez Cervantes.
Review and accept quarterly report to the San Diego County Office of Education on Williams complaints for the period of July through September twenty twenty-three. Allow me to read the background that's in the agenda. In May twenty twenty, a lawsuit was filed against the state of California claiming that low-performing schools throughout the state were housed in facilities that were dirty, unsafe, and inadequate, with further allegations that these schools were additionally burdened with unqualified teachers and insufficient instructional materials. It was enacted into law and then chaptered September twenty-nine, two thousand and four. So, the intent of the Williams settlement is to ensure that all students have equal access to instructional materials, qualified teachers, covers teacher vacancies and misassignments, safe, clean, and adequate facilities, emergency or urgent facilities issues. And we just heard today, one of the parents claimed, tell us that special ed transportation, which is supposed to also be covered under the Williams settlement, is not being provided or was missed. And I know just a couple of months ago, I shared another incident with Dr. Reyes of another parent whose child was left at the school, a special ed child, was left at the school and mom just didn't know where's her child. And when she calls, they find out that there was a mishap and Dr. Reyes took care of it, make sure it didn't happen again. So, my, what I'm surprised about is that there's nothing noted on this report. The report says zero zero zero. We've had, we have numerous low-performing schools whose staff have reported to us and that I've shared with Dr. Reyes, and I've read emails here that we have no teacher in a class to begin with, I'll be completely transparent. One of the schools that I brought out was Thurgood Marshall. They had two IAs in there in a special needs classroom with no teacher. So, some of these things, although they've been corrected, I think they need to be reported. The report calls out if it was an issue, if it was corrected, or if it's outstanding. I don't agree with this report. We have had complaints, insufficient instructional materials for Fed, Sped. I mean, I helped pay for some of that stuff. Teacher vacancy, misassignments, we receive ongoing complaints that I've brought here before the board. And this is one of the reasons I had previously advocated in my concern and my urgent was to, oh, get the, get the Sped coordinators out there. Anything like just pull from what we have because of that urgency. Thank you for the clarification in what we're doing. I appreciate that. But we still have these issues in regards to facilities. The safety facility officer, Mr. Cortez, has also identified some just in doing the thorough examination of each site. Are they being corrected? I saw Mr. Cortez correct some of them, like holes and, you know, I was there. So, I know he does that probably everywhere else. My point being is, even looking at Nextdoor or even our own CVSD Facebook, parents are complaining there of very specific issues, but they're not on this report that we're sending over. So, I cannot vote to approve it when there's nothing there to report. It should be reported. Thank you.
Dr. Reyes?
Yeah. So, Ms. Carol, can you share with the board the Williams report? So, what specifically does it look for? For example, does it look at textbooks and does it include supplemental materials or does it not include supplemental materials? Does it look at individual incidents? Or is it, or is it, for example, that we have all the systems in place of, let's say, transportation or other things, or does it take into account individual situations? Another part, and I don't know if that's you, Ms. Romero, after she answers, talking about when we have an opening for a position for, let's say, a teacher, a classroom head. We have a substitute teacher and we can't fill it, we have not filled the position, how many days we have and some of the requirements that, what are the requirements and what are the parameters? Ms. Carol?
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Reyes. So, a couple of things to consider in thinking about this Williams complaint process. There is a formal process that parents are notified, parents guardians committee are notified. It's posted in every office for those formal complaints to be addressed. There is, there is not necessarily, if those formal complaints have not been filed, then they may not show up on this report. It doesn't mean that necessarily we are not doing anything about them, but they are not filed formally. When it comes to what Dr. Reyes was saying about instructional materials, for example, when we are looking at instructional materials, we are only looking at district adopted curriculum. There are a whole lot of additional supplemental curriculum as well as materials. So, maybe we don't have enough scissors in a classroom or things like that. Those are a little bit different and they don't fall under the Williams complaint procedure. Same with when we were looking at safe, clean, and adequate facilities. So, our facilities team goes out, just like when I did the report earlier, for our two schools that were visited to do the formal Williams visit and check facilities, they are looking for, when they're talking about safe, clean, and adequate, they're making sure that the facilities are in working order. Then, when we talk about safe, that we don't have big holes in the fence. Then when we talk about safe, that we don't have big holes in the fences or we don't have concrete breaks where kids might fall or people might get hurt. Those are the kinds of safe, clean facilities that we're looking for in this Williams settlement. And so some of what you are talking about is really in that bigger picture that our safety manager and our safety team will continue to look at. So it's not that we are not looking at the other things that you are describing. They just don't technically fall under this Williams, the Williams complaint process. And again, if there are parents who are concerned about things that fall within that and they give the guidelines in the posted notice at each school site, then they can file that complaint and we can address it. Right now, we don't have any formal complaints filed on behalf of parents guardians or community for this.
Ms. Carol, could you share with the board, who is part of that official walkthrough visits?
So initially, for our two schools that were selected to have their Williams visitation, we have obviously the school team, so the school principal. And then myself, I go and representing the district in terms of the instructional materials aspect. And then we have our facilities team that goes out. So Mr. Martinez, Mr. Guevara, they go out and they take a team to walk with the team from the San Diego County Office of Education, who go through and they inspect each part of whether or not we have sufficient instructional materials for our students. Again, district adopted instructional materials. And then making sure that our facilities are safe and in repair. And if not, they let them know that because beyond the two schools that the county comes and visits, our facilities team goes out and inspects every school to ensure that. Just like we ensure that teachers are getting their instructional materials at any school, not just those two that are being visited.
Mr. Romero, could you talk about the HR components?
Yes. So first, I wasn't aware that we had two aides covering a classroom. And I'm not sure if CVCEO was aware of that because usually when that-
They did.
If something like that happens, we usually work to make sure that we rectify that because we have a district site sub program in place where we have 10 district subs that are prioritized to go to any school site where we don't have a substitute. And the number one top priority is students with special need classrooms. So I'll investigate that and find out when those were. And it sounds like you said it was already addressed, so I'll just verify that I'm kept abreast of when things like that occur. So with our substitute system, a substitute is allowed to stay in a classroom for up to 30 days if they're not credentialed. So 20, you know, student days, equivalent to about 30 calendar days. We can have a fully licensed substitute in the classroom. Now for them to stay in that classroom more than 30 days, they need to have a credential. So unfortunately, if there's a classroom where we have a substitute in place and we're unable to find a long-term credentialed sub, we do have to put a different sub into that classroom. So with our long-term assignments and what we're doing is making sure that we mandate that our specialized classrooms are prioritized. So like I said, I'm going to investigate why this occurred at Thurgood Marshall. And then we have our long-term site subs that we're able to put into those places where we need site sub coverage. This is a 2023, 2024 problem that we are actively working on. Our current solution to that is that we have our National University $6.1 million grant where we are going to be homegrowing our own special educators. So we currently have nine people in the Aspire program, different than the early childhood Aspire program. We took the name two years ago, just to let you guys know. But no complaints, no complaints. We didn't trademark it, so it is what it is. But I think you're welcome, Jorge, on that. So that program that we have, we're now going to be homegrowing our own special educators. A number of our instructional aides will be, will be community organized to come to that. And what I say by that is this program is unique in that they work in our classrooms along special education teachers. They earn their credential, but on Fridays, they're working in our community schools. They're working in our community projects to ensure that they're not just invested in our classrooms in our district, but also our community. So it's a revolutionary program. It's actually going to be a huge program that San Diego State is asking for input because they want to do the same thing at San Diego State. And it invited me to a conference to talk on this same topic about it. But we think that this is going to be something that we're able to solve next year and we're going to continue to grow. It was a soft launch this year where we had nine students. Next year, it's 20. And you had the best timing because today we had interviews for our next cohort of teachers coming in. And we're super excited to double, basically double the size of our program. So we're not going to have this problem in the future. We're actually going to have a solution that we're going to have to share with districts because we're going to have so many special education teachers from it.
I think it's been clarified that the problem was they did not submit the form. And are we supposed to advertise that?
Or that it may not fall under the scope of Williams complaints, right?
Could be.
And so-
And we, oh, sorry.
I have my own question here. So I read here that the summary report, it happens quarterly, but do the visits also happen quarterly? No, just one time a year like August, right?
It's one time a year, yes.
Maybe, are board members possibly allowed to go on those visits or is that too much pressure?
I'm, you know, I think-
Yes. Just if we wanted to be more informed.
Yes, absolutely.
The answer is yes.
Yes.
And I just wanted to clarify, Williams Act says that we have to advertise, correct?
That's right. It should be posted. That's, that's part of our compliance is that it is posted in every office in our school district.
No, and classrooms. It's in every single classroom.
Yeah, and classrooms. I'm sorry, offices and classrooms. And it's in English and Spanish.
We just have to make it visible. Okay. Mine, the classrooms I went. Thank you.
Motion and action item.
I move to approve.
I'll second that.
Moved by Trustee Bishop, seconded by Clerk Fernandez. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries four zero, one absence. Eleven E.
Trustee Dominguez Cervantes.
Ratify an addendum to the agreement with YMCA. The heading makes no reference to the DASH program, but detachment does.
It's spelled out in the heading, no?
Question, my question is, the one we approved before specifically stated that this program also tutored. My question is, is this addendum supposed to replace the previous agreement that we just approved two to three months ago or is this different?
Ms. Morales?
Yes, thank you. Good question. This is, this addendum actually reflects the additional cost that we incurred for increasing the number of days at our junior academy camps by 11. So we really set a goal within our lead program to increase those opportunities for our students. So the difference in cost is about $37,000 and that's for us adding those 11 additional days. It doesn't have anything to do with the programming changes within the programs.
Thank you.
And DASH is just, they didn't put DASH, the acronym, they just, they put the whole words there. This is an action item.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Trustee Bishop, seconded by Clerk Fernandez. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Eleven F. I'm going to ask, because I also pulled this item, that Dr. Reyes explain the memorandum of understanding.
So this MOU between Sweetwater High School District and Chula Vista Elementary School District regarding peer tutoring. This is something that's been happening between Sweetwater and Chula Vista for many, many years where we have students, high school students, come down to our schools and support our students with tutoring. But it's been happening again for many years, especially specifically with Panera Vista High School and Eastlake High School. And so what we wanted to do is we want to make sure that we have, that we come up with an agreement that it is, would delineate safety parameters for both our students and their students. And that we have accountability of what they're doing, how they're doing it, and making sure that it's a, it's a positive thing and have safety protocols in place for all students. Ms. Carol?
Yes, and so this is an opportunity for those high school age students to come in and work with some of our students, sometimes individually in small groups and give that, that extra support that some of our children need. And they really look up to the older students to be able to offer that to them during the school day. So this is during the school day experience.
And so this is to provide more transparency, more clarity of the rules and safety.
Thank you.
I'd like to also go on the record that this, this program is not overseen in any way by the office that I work for in Sweetwater. So I'm very comfortable voting for this.
And there's no cost to either district.
I move to approve.
Second. Moved by Trustee Bishop, seconded by Trustee Dominguez Cervantes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries four zero with one absence. Eleven Q and R. Trustee Dominguez Cervantes.
Approve overnight study trips. I just wanted to remind us to reach out to the parents of the children who have not signed up for these field trips. Star of India in Sacramento. And I know when I brought it up a few months ago, something that was happening, I think in January, earlier this year, it was too late. The trip was going to be the next day. So I wanted us to make sure that we reached out to those parents to ensure that it wasn't due to the lack of money, that the child wasn't going. Because I know Dr. Romero, excuse me, Mr. Romero had said before that there's a fund to, you know, scholarships for those children. And I just wanted the message to get out to these schools to make sure they reach out to those students before it's too late.
I will have Ms. Morales and Ms. Rigga reach out to their individual principals and work with the principals to ensure that happens.
Thank you.
Move to approve Q and R.
Second.
Moved by Trustee Bishop, seconded by Clerk Fernandez. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries four zero, one absent.
We just finished consent.
All right. Mr. Romero, I would like to welcome you to announce our newly hired and promoted employees.
President Ugarte, governing board member, Superintendent Dr. Reyes, and our community. It's with great pleasure tonight that I introduce our either newly promoted or new employees to our district. We already recognized Liseth Porras and Christina Queiroga, our newest principals. I'd like to call up right now our facilities and operations manager, Alejandro Vavara. Do you want to come up and say a few words? We would love to have you. A dedicated member of our facilities community. It's great, great pleasure, sir, that we recognize you tonight.
About 2000, 2001, I became familiar with CVSD when both my daughters attended Olympic view. At that point in time, I was working, I was working in the private industry. And after so many years of working in the private industry, I decided to have a career change. I started with the district in 2013 as a sub. And three years later, four years later, passed on, and I didn't want to apply for a position because I was on the belief that if my wife worked at the district, I didn't want any conflicts that we will have because of. So she convinced me to apply and I was the day custodian at Rice Elementary for three years. Fast track that, two years at Rice, two and a half years, I became the custodial supervisor for operations here in the district. And as of last month and everything, I became the operations manager. So it's been a fast track. But one of the things that I proud myself is that my heart has been for the improvement of the facilities that our kids are in. We have worked with some schools that are very old. We have worked with brand new schools. We are bringing new methodologies, new processes, new products to improve the quality of the, and the cleanliness of the schools. So it's move forward and make it better. Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you, Mr. Vavara.
The district's lucky to have you, sir. Lucky.
I'd like to call up now our community school director, Joshua Kohler. Joshua. Joshua. Joshua has served as our community school coordinator as we piloted at a couple of school sites and launched our program. His invaluableness to this program is gone just beyond his commitment. His leadership has provided us opportunity to grow the program. He's assisted in writing grants and he's just a champion of our community schools. Joshua.
Sure. Thank you so much for this opportunity. I really appreciate the recognition and the value that this school board, as well as the district leadership and the community, has really put into community schools. Service to families is a big passion of mine from my background in child abuse prevention, family resource centers, and community schools up in Oceanside Unified School District. This is something I love to do every single day. CVSD is the best place to be. I'm happy to be here to provide services to the, to our families here. And other than my own family, there's going to be no higher priority than the students' families of Chula Vista Elementary School. Thank you.
Congratulations, Joshua. So I would like to call up our instructional services coordinator for literacy, Melissa Noble. You got a mild recognition earlier. Thank you, Kate. But Melissa, a champion of education, as Kate mentioned. But we're super excited to have you in this leadership role and thank you.
I'm going to cry, just so you know. I've been in the district. This is my 20th year. I've been at Clearview for all those years. So this is a big change, but I'm super excited. Literacy is my passion. I'm always trying to grow and improve my craft for our students. And I'm just so excited to serve Chula Vista in this new capacity. And I hope that my enthusiasm for teaching literacy to our students can spread out to every teacher in our district. So thank you so much for this opportunity. I can't wait to get started.
Thank you. Congratulations, Melissa. And last, I'd like to call up our new facilities maintenance manager, Abraham Escobar. We cast a wide net for this program as well. And Abraham, just a champion of working in facilities and managing this type, these types of projects. He rose to the top and we welcome him as our newest manager in our school district.
Thank you for the opportunity. I look forward to growing with your guys as school district. This is my first time working for a school district. I basically come from the former Sutro Research Facility side, but I really look forward to the opportunity and I want to say very thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you. And that concludes our promotions of newly hired employees.
Congratulations, everyone. Good job. I would like to now take a moment to ask Dr. Reyes to talk about the beautiful artwork behind us.
So we're very excited to begin our work preparing students for our district's speech contest. So this year, our theme is how can we unleash our superpowers for positive change? And we're looking forward to our fourth graders through eighth graders, eighth grade students to participate in this year from every single one of our schools. Our grade level semifinals and overall finals will be the last week of February. So get ready and get ready to hear amazing speeches and to see the superpowers of our students. And if the board is interested in either judging or attending, please let us know.
Thank you, Dr. Reyes. I noticed we've highlighted leap year this year. On February 29th is our finals. Okay. Awesome. Public hearings. The public hearing section provides the public with an opportunity to address the board on specific items. Persons wishing to address the board on any public hearing item must be, must complete a request to be heard card and submit it to the recording secretary at the start of the meeting or call 619-679-9001 prior to the start of the meeting. Telephone line opens one hour prior to the start of the meeting. Speakers are requested to limit their remarks to three minutes and speak in a respectful and professional manner. The board shall limit the total time for input on each public hearing item to 20 minutes. With board consent, the president may increase or decrease the time allowed for public comments on each public hearing item depending on the topic and the number of persons wishing to- on each public hearing item depending on the topic and the number of persons wishing to be heard. And tonight we have A, conduct the public hearing on general waiver request to provide a reduced day extended school year program from June 10th through July 1st, 2024, and authorize the application for the general waiver request. Ms. Casey.
Thank you. Tonight, I'm asking the board to approve us to apply for general waiver from the California Department of Education. They require a 20-day extended school year program, which makes it difficult for our families and staff since we have such a short summer break. So we're asking to apply for a waiver to do a 15-day extended school year program, meeting the same instructional hour minutes that are needed to give the students the service and supports they need.
I am now opening the public hearing. Does anyone wish to speak on the matter? Seeing no one, I am now closing the public hearing. This is an action item.
So just to clarify, this just means that we're going to be, that we do this every year and that we have a slightly longer school day in order to make the school day for the
Summer program.
For the summer, so rather than extending the school summer, summer school for special ed from 20 days, we do it to 15 days and just make a slightly longer day. Is that correct?
Correct. So we meet instructional minutes.
Thank you very much. I move to approve.
I'll second.
Moved by Trustee Bishop, seconded by Clerk Fernandez. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries four zero, one absent. Item B, conduct a public hearing regarding the proposed attendance boundaries for Sonia Soto Mayor Elementary School. Mr. Escivell.
Yes, President Ugarte, we are excited for the opening of Sonia Soto Mayor Elementary in July of 2024. Located in the Otay Ranch Village Two community. That community, Otay Ranch Village Two, has always been planned for two school sites. The current school site, Maroka Elementary, is current at capacity. And this school site would allow for additional seats for current residents and future residents. The district has reviewed the current student capacity and also future growth in that area and prepared a boundary to divide the Otay Ranch Village Two community so that there is a fairly equal amount of students that will eventually go to Sonia Soto Mayor and to Maroka Elementary School.
Any questions from the board?
I do. I think it's related more to parking and the residents that live in that area. We hear that from just on Nextdoor alone. You know, well, kids get picked up more and more now by their parents versus walking to school. So I'm just hoping that we take that parking or pickup issue into consideration when the school gets built to allow for more movement or parking. I know residents complain about not even being able, like across from Tiffany, people block their driveway. They can't even get into.
Respectfully, it's a point of order because this is about boundaries and we've already, we've already determined that. But thank you for the input and I'm sure Mr. Escivell will look into that. Any comments about the boundaries?
Just a question, do we have any maps that we could look at?
Yes, we do. And we can go ahead and pull that up. So you'll see the map overall, the purple colors are the Maroka Elementary. But you'll see the current boundary encompasses the boundaries on the west side. You'll see Olympic Parkway on the north. To the east, you'll believe it's La Media. To the south is the natural barrier between Jeffers Elementary and the Otay Ranch Village Two community. And then there are the Heritage Road traveling up to the north. And you'll see housing, housing that is yet to be completed on the west side of Heritage Road. So the center divide on the boundary, you'll see, we've numbered them by numbers. So number one on the north end from Olympic Parkway, you'll see Bath Avenue to the south. Then number two is Carpenteria Street to the east. Then south, Santa Cristina. And then you'll see Keck Road, number four to the east. And then Santa Ivy Road to the south. And then number six, Paterna Drive kind of loops around down south to the end of that boundary. So you'll see that there are residents that are close to Maroka and close to Sonia Soto Mayor. And so we'll have enough capacity so that if students currently attending Maroka want to stay there, they can just submit a transfer request. To maintain that, we're going to give priority to sixth graders. But we've found in the past that once a new school opened, many of them would like to come. And we're very excited. It's a brand new school, a little bit different design than Maroka and Jeffers. And very excited about the technology and the new structure and all the new things that'll happen with the new school. And so I think we're very excited about that opportunity for that community.
Any other questions from the board? I'm now opening the public hearing. We have one person wishing to speak on this matter. Nicholas Di Ponfilo.
Hi. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for allowing me to speak. Apologize, my voice is a little raspy at this point. I live in the Otay Ranch Two community. My daughter currently attends Maroka Elementary. She's in grade two. She's attended since kindergarten. We love the community. We love the school. It's a great place to raise your kids. The community is very tight. It is the heart of the community. I saw the map was released last night. I was concerned about the location. I do fall under the Soto Mayor district there on Bath Avenue. The, I don't know if the map could be redisplayed, but regardless, there is an entrance from Santa Victoria. And there's a roundabout off Heritage Road. It's a very busy roundabout, especially in the mornings. There's a lot of traffic that crosses through the community to get to the other side to pass La Media, Otay Ranch Mall area. It is not a very safe intersection to traverse. We do like to walk to Maroka. It's about a .4 mile walk for us currently. Soto Mayor would approximately also be about .4 miles if we were to take a direct route. But to take a safer route would be about .8 miles. My request would be maybe a consideration for the areas north of that Santa Victoria intersection to possibly be, I know, understand the challenges of balancing the districting. But that did concern me. We are very excited to have the new school in the community. It's a fairly small geographic area. So it is nice. It is an unusual, possibly unprecedented in the overall CVSD to have two schools so close. My other comment would be, I understand we do have a policy that we can transfer if we prefer. That would be my preference to keep my daughter in Maroka and eventually my son when he attends kindergarten soon in the district as well. But with considerations for how close the two schools are and how the community is, maybe if there was some official policy instituted to better allow families in a position such as myself where we're currently attending one school and desire that stability to have a more, I guess, firm or clear policy clarifying that we're able to do such with relative ease and less unknown. I think that would be all of my comments. I appreciate your time this evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam President? I was just, can you clarify about the gentleman brought up again, the being able to stay at the school? We said we're prioritizing sixth graders. Are we prioritizing whole families of students that are there?
Yes, so it would be sixth graders and their siblings. And then usually with zone transfers, once a zone transfer is approved, the student is allowed to stay at that school site until they finish up their elementary education.
So in this case, it would be grandfathering in zone transfers? Is that what we're talking about? Because they would, they aren't in a zone transfer now.
Right.
But they would have to put in for a zone transfer at the time. That's the, that's the process.
Correct.
Okay. And the, but there would be prioritization for
Correct.
Current and, okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Seeing no other speakers, I'm now closing the public hearing.
Motion to approve. What's that, an action item?
It is. Okay, well, sorry.
More caffeine, please.
There are no administrative action items. First and second readings, board policies, administrative regulations and board bylaws. First and second readings, possible revision to the proposed revisions to administrative regulation 6159, individualized education program. Ms. Casey.
Yes, thank you. This board policy was updated to align with current state and federal guidelines. The last time we updated this policy was in January of 2012.
Move to approve.
I'll second.
Moved by Trustee Bishop, seconded by Clerk Fernandez. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries four zero, one absent. Item B, first and second reading, possible revision, proposed revisions to administrative regulation 6159.1, procedural safeguards and complaints for special education. Ms. Casey.
Thank you. Again, this board item was updated to align with current state and federal guidelines. The last time this was updated was in March of 2020, 2000, sorry, March of 2000.
Any questions?
I will motion to approve.
I will second.
Moved by Clerk Fernandez, seconded by Trustee Bishop. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries four zero, one absent. Item C, first and second reading, possible revision, proposed revisions to board policy and administrative regulation 6159.2, non-public, non-sectarian school and agency services for special education. Ms. Casey.
Thank you. Again, updated to align with current state and federal guidelines. This was last updated in March of 2000.
Any questions?
I'm just happy to get in compliance and I move to approve. I second.
Moved by Trustee Bishop, seconded by Trustee Dominguez Cervantes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries four zero, one absent. Where am I? Was that C?
D.
D, okay. Item D, first and second reading, possible revision, proposed revisions to board policy 6159.3, appointment of surrogate parent for special education students. Ms. Casey.
Thank you. Again, updated to align with current state and federal guidelines. We last updated this board policy in April of 2000.
Any questions?
I move to approve.
Second. Moved by Trustee Bishop, seconded by Trustee Dominguez Cervantes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries four zero, one absent. Item E, first and second reading, possible revision, proposed revisions to administrative regulation 6164.4, identification of individuals for special education. Ms. Casey.
Thank you. Updating to align with current state and federal guidelines. This was updated last in May of 2000.
Board?
I will move to approve.
I will second.
Moved by Clerk Fernandez, seconded by Trustee Bishop. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries four zero, one absent. Letter F, first and second reading, possible revision, proposed revisions to board policy 6164.5, student success teams. Ms. Casey.
And again, and last one, updated to align with current state and federal guidelines. We did a little better on this one. This was last updated in January of 2005.
Board?
So recent. I move to approve.
Moved by Trustee Bishop, seconded by Trustee Dominguez Cervantes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries four zero, one absent. Item 15, general information, item reports. Report calendar to the Board of Education. Do any board members have any requests for any reports?
I do. It's more to regurgitate what I've previously asked for. The wellness attendance coordinator, what the impact that person, that coordinator has had in that new role that we created. And I think it's important that we know, are we getting any success here as far as attendance? That was one of the biggies. And I've also requesting not to forget the organizational chart that we've had a lot of movement and we just haven't gotten it yet.
I thought we
So it was sent on one of the board updates.
I didn't see that. So I'll look.
So I'll be happy to. I'll have a
Thank you. And it has what each role is? Okay.
Yes, and the names.
I appreciate that. I think Mr. Fernandez needs it too.
There's a lot of changes. I'm sorry, as we are hiring and changing a little bit, I think maybe even quarterly getting an updated version. I know it's a lot of work to do, so if we're does that seem reasonable quarterly?
Very reasonable to me.
And you might have, it was color coordinated, so it might have looked like a diagram to you, but it was very pretty, so.
It was good.
It looked like a Venn diagram chart. I mean, it was nice.
I get challenged with my access, so we'll reconnect. Thank you. Thank you on that. And the other, we've already touched on the employee retention procedures that we asked about the survey. And the other thing that Trustee Tamayo and I had asked for before, the specific number of children at each specific school and at each specific grade that does not meet the California standard. So we know how many, we need to have a sense of numbers versus percentages.
CASP results?
Pardon me?
CASP results dashboard?
That not meeting.
Correct, but based on CASP?
Yes.
Okay.
It just came out, is it yesterday? Before yesterday?
Coming out like right now.
Yes. I think someone told me that it came out yesterday.
As I understand, so you want for each school?
What Tamayo and I asked for last month?
Okay, so for each school, each grade. So how many, let's say, second graders?
Whatever grade.
Fourth graders for Cook that are not meeting and for Marshall, for every single school.
Right. Right. We need to have a sense. The percentages, the last ones didn't look too good, so let's get a number, a sense anyway. And I'd also like to know how many TK students we have at each school. Please. And I know that our chair and VP, they went to that coast to coast trip. Did you go in May? April, you guys went to DC? You're going to report back, tell us how many federal, how much, how many federal dollars you were able to get for us?
Oh, our vice, oh, so we did go coast to coast. I can prepare a report for the
It doesn't have to be fancy, just to get an idea. Last time, I believe you guys said you were there, you were able to access some federal funds for our school district.
We'll request, we lobby.
All right. And a report that captures specifically how many classified and certificated vacancies we still have at each of our school sites. I know I mentioned it a few months ago. I hadn't brought it up again. Because I know there's a difference between extended vacancies, you have pregnancy leaves, you have medical leaves, that sort of thing. Just to get a sense of what we're looking at. We see a lot of numbers coming through as far as the hiring and moving around and promotions. I'd like to get a sense for what our vacancies are out there. Thank you.
Trustee Bishop, any reports?
None this time. Thank you.
None for myself either.
And I already asked for what I, the update. Board communications, Trustee Dominguez Cervantes.
Yes, Ms. Casey is such a busy lady. Well, all of you guys, that table is. Last month, she shared with us about the two-day crisis prevention intervention training for the de-escalation strategies. And I believe I'm getting the sense already from the previous different agenda items that we're looking to ensure that all of our staff attend these, these trainings to de-escalate and to address the behavioral issues that are out there. So I'm hoping that both are So I'm hoping that both are in-class, classified and certificated staff. And, you know, they don't even have to be in class. We have IAs out on the playground that could use this, you know, and on the bus, just all our staff. So I just wanted, before we had had the conversation, I had my little notes that, so thank you. And something I, I shared with you, Dr. Reyes, before that, I know we brought an additional support to our Ms. Rochelle. And these ladies work like fourteen hours a day at least. I don't think they sleep, they probably have a sleeping bag in their room. But some of the reports that we get from Ms. Casey back here, they're rather extensive. I come from a background with a county where that kind of work, I really appreciate how much work went into that research to give us a three-minute briefing. That three-minute briefing was probably a twenty-hour piece of document or work, a research that went to it. And I know we talked briefly about the possibility of maybe a director or something that we can talk about as far as student, student services or something else that Ms. Casey feels that she can detach herself from, you know, just help her, wean her away from some of these things. I, because of the support and the different issues that we're dealing with, I think it just not, doesn't just support her, but if, if our staff is strong, they support our school district, which, you know, the ripple effect to the students. I'd like us to consider that somewhere in the conversation.
That's what, if I may, President Ugarte. Trustee Dominguez Cervantes, thanks so much for, for your comments and for recognizing that. Yes, I agree. That table, the combined hours that everyone in that table spends, works per week is, is incredible. And I am incredibly fortunate to work with such an amazing team. And so we've had, we started having conversations with Ms. Casey exactly with that to see how we can support her, you know, with the student services components. So, so she can, she can focus more on the bigger picture of things and that time-consuming tasks can be taken, be taken care of by somebody else. So thank you.
Thank you. And where have I been lately? Probably too many places. But we did, I did, I, I attend all the city council meetings here in Chilavista. And on some of those times, I've been able to come back and bring Dr. Reyes some information that has direct impact on our school and also our families. And Liberty Elementary had a Let's Family Read. And it was, I was really happy to go there with my grandnieces and nephew, the tia Nana. And that was fun. And I went there. And I also attended the Chilavista Chamber of Commerce First Friday Breakfast, a shorter version of the homeless outreach. Teams, resources and activities was share, was shared. And with the exception of last night, my mother's in the hospital, I didn't go to the city council meeting last night. I've had a few parent-teacher meetings, especially during the break, the fall break. And that's where I get some of the information. And I try very hard to bring Dr. Reyes very specific issues. Because I do understand if I can't give him specifics, he can't address it. But sometimes generalizing what they're sharing gives us a sense of awareness and to look out for certain things that we might be able to advocate for. And the consistent message to our, that I'm, I'm getting from our staff is that during the break, they had just come off, you know, they, into their break, so they were extremely overwhelmed. And they continue to share that, but I'm really excited about what we're working on with Ms. Casey and the rest of you, and, you know, all of you guys, I know you have a component just that Ms. Casey shared with us earlier that it could help alleviate a lot of the, the concerns that are out there. Thank you.
Trustee Bishop?
Thank you very much. I wanted to wish everybody a happy LGBTQ History Month. I wanted to acknowledge that October eleventh was National Coming Out Day. And so I want to say shout out to all those who feel comfortable being out of the closet. Shout out to those who do not feel comfortable being out of the closet. But a special shout out to the allies who create safe spaces for people to be their authentic selves. So thank you to those who create space for people to come out. I also was able to attend at Southwestern College, the undocumented students legislative lunch. It's, I, this is the second year I've gotten to go to that. It is so inspiring. And one of the, there was a lot of great people in the room talking about ways in which we can work together to support undocumented students in our community. And one of the things that I thought was really incredible was a lot of the students talked about how their families, there's a lot of fear around education and, and that it was hard to convince them to let them go to college. And so one of the things that we talked about was reaching out to people through the DAC-DILAC presentation, being able to talk about opportunities for undocumented students to be able to go to college and to get the grants and funding to actually attend college. And there's so many opportunities out there. And I would, and being able to reach families early so that they can encourage their kids to want to be on that college track could really be impactful for students in our community. So I would love to follow up with you about that possibility as well. I appreciated the invitation to get to go to the administrators' breakfast. That was really incredible. It was great to hear Dr. Reyes speak with other superintendents from the south area. You did us proud. And there was a lot of administrators in the room, so it was really, from CBASD, it was really great to, to be a raucous group in the room, so that was super fun. And then I also attended First Friday Breakfast with my colleague here. So I appreciated the break. I hope everybody else got a little bit of time, downtime. And I look forward to this next quarter, getting revved up. Thank you so much to everyone who's here and who's doing the work. I appreciate this table of humans as well. And a big shout out to that table of humans who support us every day. So thank you so much. And of course, our labor partners who are just so much fun to hang out with, like, let's be honest. Anyway, thanks so much.
I want to thank Sharon, Ms. Martinez, and Ms. Reed, and others for working to address or come up with some solutions for behaviors at our, at our campuses. That's important. We've been talking about that a lot. And so it's incredible to try and address that and meet those needs. I'm going to keep it short. I, I recently lost a good friend who was a husband and a father to two kids, one that just recently graduated from our district and one that's currently in our district. So I really want to thank, I want to thank all the people at all the sites, the social workers, the counselors, and just any adult that notices a kid in need and deals with that trauma. So, thank you.
Thank you. I, I want to thank all of our staff, everyone. It's been, we're almost there. We're finally over the, we have more days, less days ahead of us for the semester before break than we do behind us. And everyone's been doing an incredible job. I was able to attend the teachers' celebration who earned their permanent status. It was a very exciting event. It was well-attended. And I was very happy to see all of our teachers who have earned their permanent status in the district and celebrate with them and their families. And so that was a special event. And I got to share that with Dr. Reyes, with our cabinet, and with our labor partner, our president, Rosie Martinez. And everyone was just so excited. And I know how important that is because it is a layer of security, knowing that you don't have to think about if you have a job next year because you're permanent. So congratulations again to those teachers, and I wish you well in your careers. And now we will hear from Dr. Reyes.
So the board has already acknowledged all the different events that have taken place. But I do want to recognize Lanny Perez for, yesterday we had the DI Cafe where teachers, teachers classified were invited to, to attend where they were presented with a different models of lessons and how to integrate technology and how to integrate best teaching practices for DI students. It was very, very well planned. It was done at Rice Elementary. And the principal also did a great job at, at hosting. And so I do want to recognize the work that was put in by the language acquisition team and with the leadership of Ms. Perez. And, you know, this, this type of activities and really support teachers in sharing best practices. And after all, that is what we're all about, all, every single day, improving the practice and the art of teaching. So, thank you.
All right. The next regular meeting of the Board of Education of the Chilavista Elementary School District is scheduled on Wednesday, November fifteenth, 2023, at four PM closed session and six PM open session. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by trustee Bishop, seconded by trustee Dominguez Cervantes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries four zero one absent.